Good evening and welcome to the fifteen hundred and seventy-third regular meeting of Board of Alderman of the City of Saint Anne, Missouri, held at City Hall on Monday, June third, twenty twenty-four, seven P. M. Alderman Shai, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Can we all remain standing, please? I'd like to do a moment of silence for staff member Chris Rogers, who's lost her father, and Donna Ebenhauser from the Grand Sample Force. Okay, may be seated. Thank you. Matt Rokoff? Okay, I want to inform the audience, some of the agendas and public speaker cards are available in that room. If a resident would like to address the board during the public comment section of the agenda, please fill out a speaker card and have it ready. Let's remind everyone that this is a meeting of the Board of Alderman. Public comments will be entertained during a specific time set aside for audio agenda. Um, Matt, we need to do liquor licenses?
We have liquor license renewals to share. So Chris was able to get those done, so just need a motion and a second.
Someone's second?
Okay.
All in favor?
Any opposed? All right, let's pass. Public hearings, we will now open a public hearing for one zero eight two zero Saint Charles Rock Road, daycare. Ready for proponents of the audience, please? Any proponents for one zero eight two zero Saint Charles Rock Road? The owner here? Okay, I guess we'll move on. Closing that public hearing. At this time, we will entertain public comments on any of the agenda items. Does anyone have anything they want to say on any agenda items? Okay, hearing none, we will move on. It's the first reading of Bill number thirty-four forty-nine, an ordinance adopting and enacting a new code of ordinances of the City of Saint Anne, County of Saint Louis, State of Missouri, establishing the same, providing for the repeal of certain ordinances not included therein, except as herein expressly provided, providing for the manner of amending such code of ordinances, providing penalty for the violation thereof, and providing when this ordinance shall become effective. Second reading of Bill number thirty-four forty-nine, an ordinance adopting and enacting a new code of ordinances of the City of Saint Anne, County of Saint Louis, State of Missouri, establishing the same, providing for the repeal of certain ordinances not included therein, except as herein expressly provided, providing for the manner of amending such code of ordinances, providing penalty for the violation thereof, and providing when this ordinance shall become effective. Matt?
Yes, this is just the second of the ordinances for the code recodification. This is actually the portion that used with the state statute changes after August of last year. So what this does is adopt it, adopt certain things, and Pedersen City mandated that we, as a fourth-class city, undertake, so it just keeps the newly recodified penalty today.
Okay, Lord, any questions? All right. Can I get a first or a second, please?
Someone's second.
Rokoff?
Day singer?
Aye.
Marino?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
Sparks?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Curry and Skew and Shai?
Yes.
All right, thank you. This one, okay. So Bill number thirty-four forty-nine becomes ordinance number thirty-three fifty-six. We're going to pass over on bill thirty-four fifty for now. So I'm going to change this ordinance. Okay. First reading of Bill number thirty-four fifty-one, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to enter an agreement with Gershenson Construction for paving work. Second reading of Bill number thirty-four fifty-one, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to enter an agreement with Gershenson Construction for paving work. Matt?
Yes, this is the temporary paving work on Saint Jokum. So we can get a temporary paving surface, our driving surface, established after MSD has put their new sewer in. So this'll be the temporary surface, and then we'll come back next year and finish. Any curbs or sidewalks that are necessary?
Lord, any questions? All right, can I get first and second motion, please?
Someone's second.
Rokoff?
Day singer?
Aye.
Marino?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
Sparks?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Shai?
Yes.
Thank you, Bill number thirty-four fifty-one becomes ordinance number thirty-three fifty-seven. First reading of Bill number thirty-four fifty-two, an ordinance authorizing and directing the city administrator to inform the Metropolitan Shore District that the city is in favor of continuing O M C I funding for municipal stormwater control projects. Second reading of Bill number thirty-four fifty-two, an ordinance authorizing and directing the city administrator to inform the Metropolitan Shore District that the city is in favor of continuing O M C I funding for municipal stormwater control projects. Matt?
Yes, this is the program that MSD has established to provide municipalities in the Cold Water Creek watershed area funding to do stormwater control projects. So we participated in this in the past, and we've used the first allocation of funding to do the stormwater control project down at the Call Course. So this would allow us to continue. The Shore District continues the program, we can continue receiving funding, so we can use it for other projects on city property. For Call Course, if you want to take on some stuff at T Meyer Park that we're initially going to require to do, we can use the money for that.
Okay, so Lord, do you have any questions? All right, I need a first and second motion, please.
Someone's second.
Matt Rokoff?
Day singer?
Aye.
Marino?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
Sparks?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Shai?
Thank you, Bill number thirty-four fifty-two becomes ordinance number thirty-three fifty-eight. Pro of monthly reports and warrant lists, any first or a second or questions?
Someone's.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, at this time, we will take any public comments or non-agenda items from the audience. That's after this one. Hi, how are you?
I'm good, how are you guys?
Wonderful.
Okay, so it was brought to my attention, I am affiliated with a rescue that's based in Florissant. We tend to take care of dogs in North County. And I spoke to my older woman the other night about how we don't have anything on the board to protect our foster families from the point of if we get a mother dog who ends up having a litter of like five or six puppies, we can't separate them for eight weeks. There's nothing that prevents us, or rather allows us, I guess I should say, to place them with a home within Saint Anne right now. And so my hope is that we can come up with a plan of action. I know that it's been a concern that people will claim they're with a rescue. In the state of Missouri, we all have to have licenses. So if they're an actual registered foster with a registered rescue that has a license and is all up to date on everything, then they should be able to bring it in and provide it, which may help with all of the backyard breeding and all of the dogs that are in rescue but aren't really in rescue. So I would love to hear anybody's thoughts on that and how we could maybe solve this issue. Because the spay and neuter program that Saint Louis County provides is great, but most people don't know about it. They don't know that you can get a fifty dollar off of a voucher for a cat, or I think it's sixty-five for a dog, for a spay or neuter, and all these different things that we could maybe put that in. Everybody has to register their animals. You have your dogs, they have to have their vaccines, you have to show it every year. So maybe we could put something into our orders and everything that you have to have your animals spayed or neutered. And then my rescue does help community families, we've done, I think, seven or eight in the last two years where they just couldn't financially do it, but they didn't want to lose their dog. And it kept their dog from straying and going and causing more puppies everywhere else. So that is kind of what I'm hoping to, you know, put out there, and maybe we can get something done that will allow us to have more fosters so that no one person is overwhelmed.
Interesting, do you guys have anything from the police department?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I don't see Sage here, so. So, yeah, we would love to hook you up with Sage, and you can get your information to carry you here?
Absolutely.
He will make sure that she can get in touch with you.
Perfect.
Work on getting something going.
Awesome, thank you.
She's currently working on some ordinances right now.
Yes, I'm hopeful that everyone will be on board with that.
Yep, the lawyer's office, no.
Awesome, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Can I say something?
Sure.
So, um, you were talking about the pregnant, pregnant animals?
Yes.
When I spoke to Sage, the, what the situation is, is that when you have a pregnant animal, it's actually counted as one animal until those puppies or kittens are six months old. So if you bring in a pregnant dog or cat, you'll, you know, you'll be able to, it's not like you have to have the puppies and have the puppies disappear right away.
Right.
So that's, so that's the way it works.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Like six months, right?
Six months, yeah.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Dr. Dora Washington, and I have been before you before. And I'm so grateful for the partnership Mayor Polk and and the chief has been able to, and Tim, they've all been able to assist us with. But tonight, I am here to make a request and don't even know quite whether or not, or how to do that, except to ask. I am a survivor, overcomer of complex childhood trauma. As a result, I established a nonprofit where I work with the most severe cases of others who have had childhood trauma. So, having said that, I have a book that's coming out in July, and I'm giving, donating all of the proceeds of that book to survivors of, to Tower of Hope Ministries, which focuses totally on the long-term impact of survivors of trauma. And we can see that, this is not just a black thing, this is not just a Caucasian or an Asian, this is, uh, childhood trauma transcends race, economics, gender, and education. So this is a world problem, this is really a pandemic, and I want to use my book, my resources, my education, everything I have, to put back into something that can change not only our communities, but our world. And I'm asking the Saint Anne Community Center, since I'm a nonprofit, I receive, as of this date, we've been in business seven years, not, we don't, I don't receive any money from the nonprofit right now. And I'm asking to be able to use the Saint Anne Community Center in August for that book signing, to invite people from the community, because I have many of your people in our program also. So that is my question tonight, is if I could use it, and because it's a nonprofit, I don't know how you all do that, but I would like to be able to use it and weigh the fee of three hundred dollars.
And so, Lord, the question is, are you willing to waive the fee of three hundred dollars to go ahead and have a book signing?
I would say yes, if I could choose to waive the fee, excuse me, um, with mental health. I think it would be great for our community, so I would make a guess.
Getting over on, yes, Matt, you're welcome. So... All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Tim, take care of him.
Thank you so much, Mayor, thank you, Alderman, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Board members. My name is Pastor, I'm Darnell Hill, pastor of the Cure Church, Saint Louis, and I have my friend here.
Pastor Davis of True Praise Family Worship Center.
Uh, we, we are here today to ask the board and the council to consider a proposition. Uh, we were, we're both in the right hall from the Northwest Plaza over by, uh, Sabrosos and the Domino's in Ward Four in that shopping plaza. We are two churches adjacent to each other. Uh, we recently heard from our landlord that Sabrosos was seeking a liquor license. Uh, and I read the statute, Missouri statute thirty, uh, three eleven point oh eight, prohibits the sale of intoxicating liquor within one hundred feet of church unless the proper authorities provide consent. Uh, we are pillars of the community, I live in Saint Anne, uh, I am, uh, I run a trauma program, uh, providing trauma therapy for youth ages three to eighteen. I also sit on the advisory board of Save Life Now, which is uh, spearheaded by, uh, Dr. Sam Page and Mayor Tashir Jones for trauma, uh, work here in the inner city. Uh, and I also mentor and have a nonprofit animal pastor as well. Uh, we believe in Saint Anne, and we, uh, True Praise has been here over thirteen years, servicing our community. The Cure Church, we, we've been here for a little under three years, uh, but our heart, and I feel that God called me to Saint Anne, uh, for such a time as this. And so we're asking the Board of Alderman and City Council to consider approving the liquor license, uh, for, uh, for Sabrosos and uh, the other facility in that place, um, to allow us to stay in our current, uh, building, location, and to continue the services, uh, and the work. Just a quick story, uh, a couple of months ago, I had a, a, a young man, he was Hispanic, and his girlfriend from the hotel, um, near True Praise come over to our church on a Sunday morning. Uh, the young man was high. He was, uh, sprung out, his girlfriend was crying, uh, they'd been living in shelters, and they found themselves from Texas here in Saint Anne at the hospital. They came in on a Sunday morning, and I'll never forget, we were worshiping, and a spirit of God just hit the place, and when they walked in, they just began to weep and cry. Uh, we were able to help them, uh, give them direction and give them hope, connect them to resources. And that's something that we want to continue to do along with partnership with True Praise, is to provide Saint Anne with a place of worship, also to impact our community, that we know that will, um, that will benefit from having two places of worship in that same area. And so we're asking the Board of Alderman today to, to consider granting, um, Sabrosos that liquor license and allow us to maintain our work here in Saint Anne, because we believe that is not done. And we believe that God called us here, and we want to stay here, we believe in Saint Anne, we believe in your leadership, we believe that if we partner together and we grow, we're able to, uh, help this community, and we do not want to move, and we do not want to start over in another city. We're called to Saint Anne, and we want to stay in terms of that. Amen.
Want to add to advise the board on that?
Sure, um, so our ordinance barrels the state statutes, so you can waive or allow an application for a liquor license, even if it's a little bit distant. If that is something you want to do, I'd recommend doing it by motion. Is that clear?
Why from the liquor license?
Stay in that apply.
Yeah, so I mean, it would just be evidence, if that's like you want to, that way, because right now they're not eligible. So if you, I would say you want the evidence in the minutes, and then also I think you want the minister to reflect that it was done at the request of the entity that raised basic requirement is there to protect our community services.
So we should do it now?
I, I mean, it, there's, you can do it now if you want, or you can do it, you can wait for them to go through the process and then come back. Um, you know, obviously, it's going to be a subject to be let something.
Let's do it, Alderman. All right.
And that's, you just have a note for?
Yeah, yeah, we, we, I would just recommend, uh, I've been through meetings like before, it could be noted in the, in the minutes that, that we did discuss this, so that way that we can get with our landlord and the. Okay.
Awesome.
Okay.
Because that's what it's about, is there leases often, or is wanting to know if we would, if we would do that? So that's, that's what their urgency is on.
So.
Are we legalizing to do? Are we, are we?
Yes, yeah, just, we are.
They just want to stay in our current building.
So is your landlord saying that if they get a liquor license, you can't stay there?
No, no, they're saying that the reason why we would have to move if the board opposes them getting their liquor license, because they can't be within a hundred feet from a church.
He's telling us to move, like move now, and then these motherfuckers.
Yeah, that sounds like the landlord's basically saying that you guys have to do it, if we can go and get a license.
Correct, correct.
I, I don't, I don't, I am confused, I'm confused, right. So your landlord is saying to me that unless we approve a liquor license for a company, you can stay, but if you do not approve a liquor license for a company, you have to move.
No, so.
Am I hearing that correctly?
Yeah, no, no, you're not, so, 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 uh, let me try. So with the, with the statute, it states that a liquor site license cannot get approved within a hundred feet from a place of worship. So he wants to apply for his business a liquor license, which means that if he does apply and gets approved, we could no longer be there. So the loophole.
Wait, wouldn't we be grandfathered in?
No. The state, the state statute says that, says that you can't, the only way that you can, the liquor license, the application be if the board chose to waive the requirement.
Correct.
So what they're asking is that we waive the, waive the requirement to make the property or eligible to apply, and you guys approve a liquor license, still have to go through the, the application process, and be qualified, but they can't even apply now because.
Yeah, the church, correct.
Oh, so the owner, the owner is the one that's already in the business?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, so, clearly, yeah, so if, if you're kind of thinking of it wrong by ground, yeah, it's the current, so the new restaurant cannot get a liquor license due to the present location of the church, so he doesn't want to renew the lease on the church if that means they can't get the liquor license.
So basically, your landlord is saying that if you don't get a liquor license.
Basically, yeah, basically, he's still saying that, yes, and I can, if I can't get a liquor license for my business, I won't renew the lease.
No, no, he's saying, you need to move so I can get my liquor license. And what they're saying is, it's okay to have a liquor license next door to me, it ain't offending my church.
Correct.
That's exactly what they're saying.
Yeah, we're okay with it, we just want the board to approve it so when he applies.
I don't have a problem with it, I think the biggest thing that I have a problem with is that we didn't set it, right?
Correct.
I think, I think that's my, that's my thought process.
It makes sense that it's trying to follow state law.
Yeah, I don't think he's threatening you necessarily, he's just saying.
I don't, I don't.
We, 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 uh, we, we've had a, a, a discussion with the owner, and I got it in the writing, he told me that if the board approved it, somehow we can work this out. He has no objection of us sustaining and staying in the place that we're currently in now. He just want to be able to get a liquor license, and he can't do that within a hundred feet from a church. So we, we both are affected by this decision, we both agree that we are okay with, with listening to me. Jesus is going to be preached throughout Saint Anne regardless, and then that's what we stand on. But we, we're asking you, if you can approve, approve that for us, approve that for them in person.
Okay, so, so my question to Ed then is, if they can't even apply until we give them permission, then should we do that now?
I mean, it might be easier than, just so, if someone was to make a motion to, um, at the request of the neighboring place of worship, uh, to waive the statutory and ordinance, this requirement to allow for this other business to apply a liquor license.
Because they might have to get approved.
Yeah, it's considered a problem.
Right, right, they might have to get approved, so.
So would any of the board members like to make a motion?
Yes.
Now, before you go any further, can I say something for this? Okay, what's to keep this from dominoing, dominating, uh, dominoing into different companies bringing the same thing, like the drug, etc.
Each liquor license would be, so if this restaurant closed down and someone else came in, that would have to.
It applies to that restaurant, yeah. So, so if you guys approve it, and this falls apart, and then they come in, and another restaurant decides to come in, they don't automatically do that.
Hey, you speak up.
Um, I think my, my biggest issue is, right, is morally, I don't think that, because I, I, I want your church to stay there, so I would do, I am going to vote personally on that behalf, to say yes, to do this, right? Um, because I hope you guys can be able to help, because I think more people that drink, you might be able to get some people to come to worship, right? So, uh, so, so I'm going to, I would vote yes on that behalf. I just, um, I want the board and everyone to be aware that if something like this ever happens again, right? Because to me, it's like, you have to go so I can get something that he doesn't even know if he can get, and that kind of bothers me.
And we have to deal with these individuals that come up.
Yeah, so, but I, I think you guys continue to do great work, right?
Thank you. Okay, so Kathy has a motion on the table.
I have second half motion.
Motion and second?
Motion and second, Matt, a vote, vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Chris?
Y'all sold, bless.
Give him a letter or something that makes it.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. All right. Take care.
Hello, hello, I am Captain Blake Kerrigan. Uh, this is Deputy Chief George Ravens. Uh, the Police Department has two awards to, to give out tonight. Uh, first, I want to thank, uh, the mayor and the board for allowing us to do this. Uh, I think it's really good we give out these awards. Uh, and these two awards we're going to give out tonight are very special, uh, to, uh, let me tell the stories, and then you'll see why they're special. So the first, uh, first is Detective Sergeant Tim Levison, please come up here. All right, so those of you who don't know, Detective Sergeant Levison, he is a TFO agent with DEA. And, uh, he's detached to the Strike Force in Battle Heights, he does great work there, he brings in uh, thousands, ten thousands, hundred thousands of dollars for the, for the Police Department. Uh, he recently got an award from the United States Attorney's Office, uh, the Eastern District of Missouri. And it's a very, uh, tough, tough award to, to get, there was only three agents on this case, uh, that, that got this award. So I'm going to read a little backstory on this case, just to fill you guys in, uh, and show you how impressive, impressive this was. All right, so this has to deal with a case involving Maurice Lee. Maurice Lee led a single space drug organization that obtained bulk fentanyl, crystal methamphetamine from Arizona. At the height of the conspiracy, Lee and his conspirators were selling over twenty thousand doses per week. Lee also was very violent, offering bounties for the murder of rival gang members or drug dealers. Lee paid ten thousand dollars for the June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen murder of Kevin Davis in Saint Louis, during which another man was shot and wounded. Lee also placed a hit on Alexander Noodle, who was fatally shot on May eighth, two thousand seventeen. Over a hundred rounds of two-two, two-two-three shell casings were recovered at the scene. Along with those murders, Lee and his associates were involved in at least eleven other shootings in which ten people were injured, two police chases, and a carjacking.
DEA Group Thirty-two, which is Sergeant Levisaw's group, Task Force Officer Tim Levisaw and Special Agent Matt McKnight began their investigation by working an informant who had knowledge of a violent distribution network. The DEA then identified two homes Lee and his associates used to store drugs, guns and money. At the same time, St. Louis County Police Department detectives Joshua Merritt and Kevin Walsh were looking at Lee for a St. Charles County carjacking, as well as Lee and others for other violent crimes. As St. Louis County detectives were reviewing some unsolved shootings, including murders, the DEA was interviewing some of Lee's co-conspirators and learning that the shootings and murders were not only related to Lee's gang, but were done at Lee's bidding. During the investigation, law enforcement seized significant quantities of marijuana, methamphetamine, fentanyl, heroin, cocaine base and drug paraphernalia, as well as forty-four firearms and thousands of dollars in cash. On March fourteenth, two thousand nineteen, Lee and thirteen co-defendants were charged with a multitude of crimes, including drug conspiracy and possession of a firearm and furtherance of drug trafficking crime resulting in death. Two more, like, two more were later charged. All sixteen, all sixteen ultimately pled guilty. Lee admitted being responsible for the distribution of between four and twelve kilograms of fentanyl and between five hundred grams and one point five kilos of methamphetamine. Lee was sentenced in September two thousand twenty-three to twenty years in prison. Tremaine Silas, one of the men who shot Mr. Noodle, is serving an eighteen-year sentence. The other shooter, Jerome Fisher, was sentenced to seventeen years. Michael Johnson, who shot Mr. Davis, was sentenced to eighteen years in prison. So obviously it was a huge case, years of investigation that, that he and his, his coworkers did on this. So it was a super, super high honor for him to get that and we just want to recognize him on the municipal level through St. Anne, his hard work and dedication and just to show you guys, the public, the kind of, the kind of men and women that, that work here in St. Anne and protecting this. All right, for the public who doesn't know, we were involved in a shooting back in February. Officer Eric Sontimer was involved in a, in a shooting. Just recently, this week, I believe, the North County Police Cooperative who did the investigation for that shooting got presented to the prosecutor's office, St. Louis County Prosecutor's Office, and Officer Sontimer was cleared in that shooting. So basically, they ruled it a good shooting. It's still under investigation for the criminal side of the, the gentleman who pulled the gun on Officer Sontimer, so we can't have him speak to it, but while, I'll read you a little snippet of, of what happened and then we'll, we'll recognize Officer Sontimer. So on February seventeenth of this year, Officer Sontimer and his partner responded to an apartment complex for a sitcase. After waiting for approximately fifteen minutes, the suspect became irate and pointed a firearm in the direction of Officer Sontimer and his partner. Officer Sontimer drew his pistol and fired one shot at the suspect and effectively stopping the imposed threat. Due to his quick, quick actions, he stopped what could have been a violent tragic incident. For that, we would like to present Officer Sontimer with the St. Anne Medal of Valor. And just so you guys know, the St. Anne Medal of Valor, we haven't given one out in, in years. So he is the first officer in several years to, to receive this award. What he did that day, if, if you guys haven't seen the video, it's on Police Activity on YouTube. There's up over four thousand comments on it right now, all good comments praising Officer Sontimer. But yes, what he did that day was, was awesome, his, his senses were perfect. He, he'd seen the threat coming and he took care of it, so for that, we want to recognize Officer Sontimer. And just so you guys know, I'm filling in for Chief Jimenez, sorry that he can't be here. Thank you guys very much for, for applauding those officers, I just want you guys to know that the men and women of the St. Anne Police Department work very hard every day to try to keep you guys safe and to, to work for you guys. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Captain Carrigan. On behalf of the Board and myself, thank you so much, gentlemen, for the work that you guys do. Hey, Matt, can we have a close session? Would you say, Alderman, you want to take a close session? Uh, Leo? Thank you. We're going to have a close session, this evening is a joke, thank you all for coming out this evening.